I'd like to call this meeting to order. All police staff to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call please?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Culpepper.
Present.
Dr. Denson's currently not here. Mr. Griffiths as well. I believe though, I think Mr. Griffiths was going to be out of town this week.
He was.
Yes, he was, okay. Mr. Huntington.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Mia.
Present.
And then Mr. Willis is excused this evening. So you do have a quorum to conduct business.
Okay, may I please have approval of the agenda please?
To the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I make the motion, we approve the agenda as written.
I second.
Okay, with motion by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Next announcements and communications?
There's none from staff at this time.
Okay, I'd like to read a statement. The Southfield Planning Commission is a seven-member board appointed by the mayor with the approval of city council that acts as advisory capacity to the council to make recommendations on text amendments to the Southfield zoning ordinance, rezoning request, special land uses, site plan reviews, the Southfield master plan, and the capital improvement plan. Our study meetings and regular meetings are open to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act PA 267 of 1976 and are held on Wednesday evenings at 6:30. Meeting agendas are posted the Friday evenings before the next Wednesday meeting and are available for viewing at cityofsouthfield.com. Copies of plans, text amendments, the master plan, and capital improvements plan are available for viewing at the planning department offices and current projects can be viewed using our online interactive tool on the planning department's homepage, planning department projects online. Contact the planning department at (248) 796-4150 for questions Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Okay, first on the agenda we have PSLU 18-0007. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, at the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, PSLU 18-0007 and its companion site plan PSP 18-0009 weren't quite ready to come before this board for final recommendation, so they did request postponement to the May agenda. So we would like to again postpone both PSLU 18-007 special use request, MTK family investments, and PSP 18-0009, the site plan review request of MTK family investments, postpone that to a date certain, that being your May 22, 2019 meeting.
Okay, okay, can I have a motion please for postponement?
To the chair?
Commissioner Culpepper?
Thank you. I so move that PSLU 18-007 and also site plan PSP 18-0009 be postponed until our May meeting.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Culpepper approved the moving to a date certain, seconded by Commissioner Mia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that moves to a date certain.
To the chair?
Yes.
Jeff, I didn't say that, I think, did you say the May the 27th?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second, yes.
Okay, May 22nd, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda we have PZR 19-002.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it appears that the petitioner for that particular rezoning request as well as PSLU 19-0001, and then there's also a companion PSP 19-0001, petitioner's not here at the moment, so if we can kind of move that to the end of today's agenda, possibly give them an opportunity, they could be on their way in here with the parking kind of at an issue up front of the building here, they may be just a little bit delayed. So if we can just move them to the end of the agenda then, then if we can move to PZR 19-0003 and PSP 19-003, that would be staff's recommendation.
Okay, okay, that's what we'll do, we'll move to PZR 19-003.
Okay, thank you, sir. With regard to PZR 19-0003, this is the rezoning request of RangeCom Development on behalf of the owner, Chan Professional Properties, to rezone 3.59 acres of land to OS Office Service located Sidwell Parcels 2426151-006-007. This is on the east side of Evergreen Road between Noel and the M-10 freeway. The companion to this is, as I noted, PSP 19-0003, that's the site plan review request of RangeCom Development on behalf of the owner, Chan Professional Properties, construct a 24,000 gross square foot skilled nursing facility with 24 beds, expandable to 36 beds in Phase Two with associated parking and property located Sidwell Parcel that I had mentioned earlier, 2426151-0006 and -007. Staff will take each of these items separately and then allow the planning commission to have a public hearing on the rezoning request. The site plan does not require a public hearing, so then, once we make our presentation, then you would need to kind of split both of those items up after that.
Okay.
So with regard to, and I can't get the, thank, I appreciate that, City Planner Crowe's gonna tap the machine over there so I can at least get slides moving here.
Okay.
There we go, okay, so give me an opportunity to kind of flip through the first case here and we'll move on to the next one. So here's the rezoning request, again, this is 3.59 acres of land, as you can see on the slide, this property is located on the east side of Evergreen Road and we're between Noel and the M-10 freeway, which is just to the north of those properties. Current zoning of the property was conditionally rezoned a number of years ago to OS Office Service. What the, generally what the ordinance states is that if nothing happens with that particular rezoning, then we go through the process of rezoning again, either to the previous zoning or to a new zoning. In this case, the petitioner is here this evening to rezone the property basically to the zoning in which it was conditionally rezoned, which is OS Office Service. So they're looking for similar zoning to what was previously done, in this case, there's no conditional rezoning that goes along with it, it's just a straight rezoning. Closer look at the properties, existing conditions on either side, both north, southeast, and west. Future land use, so the property from a future land use standpoint is shown as office research. Current zoning with R-M across the street to the west, R-4 both to the south and to the east, and then OS Office Service directly to the north. And again, what the petitioner is proposing is to go to OS Office Service. The site plan portion, as I had noted, was for the construction of a 24,000 gross square foot skilled nursing facility. They'll start with 24 beds and be expandable to 36 in Phase Two along with the associated parking, obviously the property is the same. This is the proposal for the site plan, you can see that the, at least from a first-phase standpoint, three separate buildings, although they're connected by hallways, this would be a total of 24 beds. The office therapy kitchen portion would be up there in the northwest corner, directly to the east of that would be specialty care for 12 beds and then to the south 12 as well. You can see that green space area, that's the expandable area for additional 12 beds should they desire to do that in the future. Building is a mix of brick and siding, or stone and siding, as required, they do have the stone along the base of the building for more durable material that we require. And then these are kind of images of the interior of the building, this is one that's currently constructed, but we can anticipate that the new building would have similar look. And that's it for that particular item there. The petitioner is here this evening, so probably give them an opportunity to explain to the commission why they're looking to come to Southfield and then answer any questions that you might have. Again, keep in mind that we do have the rezoning requests before you and then the site plan, so after they give their presentation, make sure that you open it up for the rezoning request for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the petitioner please come forward please? Just state your name and address for the record.
Cliff Healy, 1630 DePere Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63131. I'm the lead project manager for RangeCom on the Southfield Specialty Care Project. As staff mentioned, we are looking to rezone to office services, which we feel is consistent with the general area. The ultimate use will be a skilled nursing facility. We've selected Southfield specifically for its access to multiple hospital systems and being in the center of it all, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have on this rezoning.
Okay, can you please give us a little bit more overview of what you're doing?
Sure, absolutely. As it relates to the facility itself, it's going to be a 24/7 skilled nursing facility, specialty care unit, this is going to be high acuity specialty care, the average length of stay for a patient's going to be between 30 and 120 days. The project in and of itself is going to be about a $12 million investment. We anticipate producing 46 jobs in the first phase, and once the second phase would be complete and fully occupied, another 24 jobs would be brought to the community. This is predominantly RNs, LPNs, CNAs, directors of nursing, culinary staff, and that's a general character of who we're looking to bring as our employees to the site. As I mentioned, it's a, it is a 24/7 operating facility, will have staggered shifts so that there's not too much traffic going on at any given point in time. From a site layout standpoint, we've done our best to push the site as far forward, or push the building pad as far forward as possible to allow as much space on the eastern side to the single-family homes as well as minimizing the look of asphalt in front and not having parking fields and that sort of a thing.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I'd like to open up to the public now. If there's anyone from the public would like to speak, just move, come forward. Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, concerns?
Again, just, if you wouldn't mind, just be specific to the rezoning at this point, and then we'll get into the site plan next.
Okay. Any questions on the rezoning?
To the chair?
Commissioner Culpepper?
Thank you. As I said in our study meeting, I don't see an issue with this because what we're doing is reverting back to what it used to be. It was office service, OS, so it stayed stagnant for so long that I don't see an issue doing this because number one is you are putting a quality building in that area, so zoning to me would be perfect, and it fit perfect because it was fit that way before. So since none was done, going back to OS is no problem here at all, so I support this rezoning 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Culpepper? Anyone else?
Through the chair?
Okay, yes.
I just want to reiterate in the big picture that we have an aging population. Healthcare is becoming more and more of an issue as far as providing healthcare and the healthcare business, and this, I think, skilled facility will lend itself to our changing demographics, not only in Southfield but across the nation, the needs as we grow older and live longer, but have more healthcare issues.
Thank you. And I too, I agree, it's very necessary in the city of Southfield, we do have aging It fits with the master plan, it's a good area for it, I think the rezoning is appropriate for it, and I do support it. Okay, to the chair? Yes, Commissioner Culpepper?
Thank you. One other comment, as we talked in our study meeting, I'm honored that you've taken such a high-quality site to do this. I mean, the patients you're gonna have in there, it's gonna be high-quality, and to bring in potential four to six people in the beginning and adding 24 more to give a total of 70 people in the area, we're talking about qualified physicians because this is a place that they will only come from a short period of time, it's not like a convalescent home, and I think it'd fit perfect, what you're doing is like Terry said, something like that is needed because people want to go someplace and not feel like they're in a hospital. And I, again, I know we on the, on the OS, on the zoning, but I think this would fit perfectly in there, and you chose this place based because of the hospitals and the expressways are close, so you're gonna have a wide variety of people to come in there, and I'm ecstatic for it, I can't wait to see it. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Culpepper. Can I have a recommendation from the city planner, please?
Yes, with regard to PZR 19-0003, the rezoning request of RangeCom Development, the planning department does recommend favorable recommendation to rezone 3.59 acres of land to OS Office Service for the following reasons. Southfield comprehensive master plan indicates office research for this property, change in zoning would be compatible with and similar to existing adjacent land uses to the north and south, and the proposal is in accordance with the standards of rezoning for property.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion please. Commissioner Mia?
Yes, due to favorable recommendation of planning department, I'd like to make a motion that PZR 19-0003 be accepted.
Okay, Commissioner Martin?
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Martin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck.
Moves forward.
Thank you.
Now, just stay there.
Okay, now we're gonna open up for the site plan review, PSP 19-0003.
Do you want to add any comments to the site plan in your presentation?
I believe the only things I wanted to point out was that we continue to advance some of our discussions from the study meeting, gave us some good suggestions for adding some additional benches and landscape features to make it, you know, a more serene environment, particularly in the interior courtyards and in the future expansion area, and so that's something we're actively working on and we're very excited to be moving forward.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If I could ask, unfortunately, through my own family issues, you know, I've spent a lot of time at similar types of facilities, and I know that it's always important for people who are recovering to have access to green space. Do you, do you have any like pergolas or gazebos that can be incorporated in the outside so that you're providing some shade and some protection for residents if they want to be wheeled outside and get some fresh air?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the nice things about the interior courtyard design is just that you can get some eaves and so you're not in the sun. I think it would be completely logical to put something like a pergola on the southernmost wing on the east side, so that's a more enjoyable area, and in addition, obviously, to the shade that would be out front.
Would you be willing to provide a small schematic of that prior to our council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to add that to our recommendation for approval.
Okay, great, great. Okay, commissioners, any other questions, concerns?
To the chair?
Okay, Commissioner Culpepper?
Thank you. Maybe I jumped the gun. I too, we talked about it in the meeting that glad you're doing this, is to have some type of seating outside, Commissioner Huntington brought that up because, again, these people are mobile and they can't move around in wheelchairs, and as Terry also alluded, people don't want to be quote-unquote stuck in the rooms. And again, let me compliment you, these rooms, this facility, schematic shows it does not look like a hospital, and that's becoming, you know, it gives you, you don't even have the hospital bed, it gives you the quality of almost being at home. I like the dining room area, I like the introduction area, but you know, serenic peace of mind is good, if they can be wheeled outside, be able to sit outside and see the sky and sit on some benches, that's great. So that will be part of the recommendation going forward, that that is included, and hopefully you can get that to Terry and to Jeff before it goes to the city council.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mia?
Just to piggyback on a comment on Commissioner Culpepper, the plans are beautiful, if I ever get to that point, knock on wood I don't, that's a beautiful facility. It looks homey, it's very roomy, so it's not tight and cramped like most facilities, it's very roomy and it's beautiful, and I think this will be an asset to the area, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Martin?
I just remember a brief conversation about the buffer area, and I know this from your drawings that you have a nice thick buffer area for your space to the homes you gather behind you. I think that's very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, you know, this, what you're doing is important, is necessary, is needed, and you know, hopefully, you know, will be done professionally, so when you walk inside, you know, everything smells nice and fresh, it's light and lively, lively-looking. I was kind of surprised more effort wasn't put into an outdoor area for walking or sitting. It's so important to be able to get out on a nice day like today and get some fresh air and feel that sunshine coming in, so hopefully you guys give it a little bit more thought and maybe put a little bit more into it as far as what's going on outside. But overall, I think the project is great, I think it's great for the city of Southfield, I think it fits well.
Thank you.
Do I have a recommendation from the city planners?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning department does recommend favorable recommendation for the site plan review request PSP 19-0003 of RangeCom Development for the construction of 24,000 square foot skilled nursing facility with 24 beds, expandable to 36 beds in Phase Two with associated parking for the following reasons. Receipt of waivers from the zoning board of appeals of 15 feet for front yard landscaping, 30 feet required, 15 feet provided. Final detailed landscape plan must be approved by the planning department prior to the project being reviewed by city council. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties. Petitioners provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Petitioners execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas, both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of any stormwater detention system. Petitioners implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Building will be constructed in accordance with the elevation shown on Southfield post-acute elevation sheet dated 4/319. Approval of the site plan and any building elevations represented herein does not constitute approval of any signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the building department for proposed signs. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.29, Paragraph 12. An approval of the site plan by the city council will also constitute approval of a true removal permit for the project. And finally, the petitioner agrees to submit a schematic for exterior outdoor spaces.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mia?
Due to favorable recommendation by the planning commission, uh, planning department, I'd like to make a motion that we accept PSP 19-0003.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion moved by Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Denson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes, moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck to you.
And then you can coordinate with our office on the upcoming meetings for the council, thank you.
Okay, do we have the other petitioners available? Doesn't look like it.
No petitioner obviously is not available. They were made aware of this meeting, so they knew that this was coming for your final recommendation. Unfortunately, I don't know where they are this evening.
Through the chair, I mean, there's two courses of option, we can postpone to the next date certain, you could hold the public hearing, because it was advertised as a public hearing, and postpone taking action to the next meeting, so you have those two choices.
Okay, commissioners, postpone to the next date certain?
To the chair?
Yes, Commissioner Culpepper?
I would like to propose that we have the public hearing and just get that out the way and let the petitioners know the time that the planning department says for them to come in, but since we've advertised it, I would like to have it, I support having it.
So we'll need to, if that's the pleasure of the commission, we'd like to just introduce it on the record first.
Okay, okay, is that good with you, Commissioner Martin?
I'd like to second.
Okay, Commissioner Mia?
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Denson?
I agree.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move forward with the...
Okay, thank you. So the first public hearing was actually, again, there's two public hearings on this particular project, PZR 19-0002, which is the rezoning request of decorum construction on behalf of the owner, tomorrow Star Academy Daycare to rezone .3 acres of land from R-2 single-family residential to OS Office Service, property located 19831 West Nine Mile Road, south side of West Nine Mile Road between Maple Ridge and Evergreen. The companion special land use is PSLU 19-0001, special land use, special use request of decorum construction on behalf of the owner, tomorrow Star Academy Daycare, to use an existing house of 2,000 square feet or more for daycare use, property located 19831 West Nine Mile Road. Also associated with this is the site plan portion, and that's PSP 19-0001, which is again, it's for the actual construction of the property in accordance with our zoning ordinance requirements, to convert the existing house to a daycare with associated parking, child drop-off area, outside play area, et cetera. With regard to the rezoning portion, you can see on the screen, this property is located on the south side of West Nine Mile Road, we are just east of Evergreen Road. This petitioner actually owns the daycare center directly to the west, and so what has occurred is... actually owns the daycare center directly to the west. And so what has occurred is over the years, she has a very popular location, and she's kind of run out of room, and she's looking to expand her use, her daycare use, to the adjacent property. Property currently is owned for moderate density, single-family, and the property is owned R two single-family residential. As you can see, her current use, her current property with daycare is already zoned OS Office Service. So really, moving to an OS Office Service seems like a reasonable use of the property. Generally, you'll find OS directly adjacent to single-family residential along Twelve Mile Road, along Ten Mile Road, along Nine Mile Road. So it's pretty consistent that OS Office Service would be adjacent to residential. So with regard to this particular request, planning department does not have any problem with going to OS Office Service for this piece of property. The PSLU portion, again, is to use the existing house of 2,000 square feet or more for daycare use. This is very specific in the ordinance that in OS Office Service, you can use a house, is this existing, single-family, for an office-type use as long as it meets certain requirements. In this case, that 2,000 square feet is a pretty solid number. If it's under 2,000 square feet, we have to look at it a little differently. But this is actually a structure that's over 2,000 square feet, so it meets the intent of the ordinance from the standpoint of the special use portion. So planning, the staff is also comfortable with this particular use as well. This is a kind of close-up view of the building. That's the existing house. There really are going to be no major changes to the house except for the existing garage, which is located on the east side, was, is actually going to be converted over into space for indoor childcare. The back portion or the south portion of the house would be converted over to an outside play area. What the existing looks like adjacent to, you can see that bottom to the west, that's the existing daycare center that she currently owns. The site plan portion, again, should the special land use go through, would be, again, to convert the house to daycare use and then to make sure that the property itself conforms to all the zoning ordinance requirements with pedestrian connections, bike racks, proper number of parking spaces, which they do meet. They do have the barrier-free space required with the eight inch, the eight-foot barrier-free space with the eight-foot access aisle. Also a fenced playground area, as I noted, to the south, which actually would be on the top side of this particular picture. So they do meet the ordinance requirements for parking. They will need waivers from the zoning board of appeals. Because it's an existing condition, they will need waivers for landscaping on the front, as well as a side yard setback on the east side of the building. Current building is ten foot, ten foot three, 10.3 feet away from the property line. The requirement is 15 feet. And with that, that's, does, that's it for staff's presentation.
Through the chair, Jeff, have they extended the sidewalk across their frontage?
Uh, yeah, that's, yeah, they show that as well.
Yeah, I can't tell, I can't tell.
Yeah, this particular was cut off. The site plan does show that they do extend the sidewalk across the entire frontage to be what would be their eastern property line. There is a sidewalk across the frontage of their existing location. Actually, if I could probably go back to the, you can see it on the left-hand side of the screen. You can see the sidewalk there. You can also see it along Nine Mile Road. There's no sidewalk currently in front of the property, but they are proposing one as part of their site plan.
Thank you, Jeff. This is a public hearing. I'd like to take this moment to open it to the public. Okay. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, any questions?
Through the...
Just can ask questions.
So just want to be clear, we just closed the public hearing on the rezoning.
On the rezoning, correct.
And we still have to hold one on the special land use?
Okay.
And I, the reason I'm saying this is because we are being televised.
Yes.
And that's why I wanted to go through this so the audience at home has an ability, you know, to see what's going on.
Okay, okay. Are there any questions as far as the rezoning? Any concerns?
To the chair?
Commissioner Culpepper?
This is to Jeff. Does that house have a circular driveway?
Yes, it does.
Okay, because I went by there today and looked at it, it does have a circular driveway. And I was trying to find it on the pitch off of Nine Mile, because I got a question about the circular driveway.
Okay.
If they're coming down Nine Mile, going west, and they turn into that driveway and park in that circular driveway, that circular driveway, you know, they have three or four cars, do we, and I know I'm looking at the site plan, it won't be a cumbersome, but that circular driveway isn't very big. So the parking, are they going to use that circular driveway as a drop-off area? I see they have one on the print, but it's also...
Yeah, the intent is, it does say, it says right on the sheet itself, for the site plan, it says no parking, that there is a drop-off area in front of the building itself, in front of the ramp that would go to the building. They do meet, for a one-way drive, we require a minimum of 20 feet. They do show 21 feet. So they do have enough room for a one-way drive to go through. Right. Obviously, with the drop-off there, there is a possibility that it could back up traffic, yes.
Yeah, that was, the concern is that, you know, that you turn that circular drive, which is two-way, you know, egress, into a one-way. And if whoever pulls into that daycare first to drop off doesn't pull far up enough, that could cause a little problem with cars coming or going east on Nine Mile. Yeah, because I went by there today, again, to take a look at, to make sure that I was seeing what I thought I saw two weeks ago. So...
If I, if I may through the chair to Mr. Culpepper, we are talking about the rezoning portion right now. I know you have a question about the driveway, which is more of a site plan question than a rezoning question?
I thought we'd move, okay. Correction, thank you, I'll save it. Sorry.
Okay, anyone has a concern on the rezoning?
So I think the appropriate motion would be to postpone a decision to a date certain, which would be the May twenty-second meeting on the rezoning.
Okay, any motions?
Motion to postpone...
Second.
To a date certain?
To a date, I'm sorry. Yeah, motion to postpone to a date certain, the rezoning of PZR, I'm sorry.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah. PZR nineteen dash zero 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 three, to a date certain of May twenty-second.
Two.
I'm sorry, zero zero two, to a date certain.
Of May twenty-second, right.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Denson?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. Okay, so that will be postponed to a date certain. Let's move to the site plan.
Special land use?
Special, special land use.
Open the public hearing for the special land use.
Okay. Okay, any...
Through the chair, I think it would be appropriate to open the public hearing for the PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 one.
Okay. Okay, let's open the public hearing again for PSP nineteen dash zero zero one.
Just a friendly amendment, it's PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 one.
Okay.
Special land use request of decor construction.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, there you go, okay. Okay, PSLU, I'm sorry, nineteen dash zero zero one, special land use request, is now open to the public. Okay, seeing none, the public portion is closed. And I will turn it over to the commissioners.
To the chair?
Commissioner Culpepper?
Let me reinstate what I just said. I, I don't have a problem with the special land use. I looked at the, I looked at the special land use standards and think this proposed use does fit the size and character of that neighborhood area, because they're building, they already have one facility there, so moving next door is no problem. Location, size, intensity isn't an issue, so they meet that qualification. It's in accord with the spirits and chapter of what we proposed and we're consistent, because as we said before, I am honored that someone would take these many kids in at an early age to try to take care of them, to help our residents. So I applaud that. It's also, it's a good place. The only issue that I had, and I mentioned before out of context, is looking, looking at the new building, when you're going east on Nine Mile and you're making that right turn into the building, that's a circular driveway. But I understand that that driveway will become a one-way. So therefore, I'm assuming that we won't have a backup on Nine Mile with people coming in at the same time, three or four different parents, and pulling into that driveway, dropping off kids, and you have a backup on Nine Mile. That was my only concern, because I, I went by there again today to look at, to make sure I was seeing the right thing. But as Jeff said before, when I spoke too fast, that that will become a one-way in. And hopefully, that doesn't cause a problem on Nine Mile. So I'm okay with that. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I think, oh, Commissioner Martin?
I, I believe that one of the things that should be considered is that we ask the petitioner to have instructions for their clients that if cars are backed up or at the end of the driveway, to use the daycare, the primary building, as a turnaround point so that they don't block traffic. There's room to go into their parking lot at the daycare and then turn around and come out to go into the new building rather than blocking traffic. So that's something we should ask the petitioner to consider so that, to tell their client so that they don't cause any traffic delays on Nine Mile.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. When we had the study meeting, did they say that it's going to be 24-hour or just that other building?
No, yeah, the existing use of the daycare that they currently have is actually open 24 hours. I remember that I was, I was concerned about that when I heard a 24-hour because it was not mentioned as, as being a part of this particular use. And she confirmed that this will not be 24-hour use, this particular one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, daycare is definitely something that's needed in Southfield. I raised a couple of kids in Southfield, so I know how important daycare is, a good quality, professional-run daycare. I was out to the property also today, and that was my concern about the traffic flow. We're looking at 30 kids possibly coming in for a day, and the traffic flow is going to be important. You know, you see the parents, they're always in a hurry, they're always running late. Kids are running all over the place, you know, jumping out the cars and stuff. So that's really my main concern with this project is the traffic flow and how it's going to flow. And it'd be good to have the petitioners here to speak about it, give a little more clarification on it. Commissioner Mia?
Yes. Will they be required to have a sign stating which way is the one-way?
Yeah, generally, we would ask that, that if they have, they need to have at least a one-way in, one-way out sign on that property. So, yeah, so there's not the potential for a mix-up and coming in the easternmost drive instead of using the westernmost drive.
Also, I believe, in the study session, I believe there was an issue with the fence. Are they gonna, the fence, and I think the fence, they were going to take care of the fence? I think it was an issue with the fence.
There's a wall requirement.
Okay. I think there's a fence there in the back.
In the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Chicken wire.
Yeah, yeah, the fence is kind of rickety.
Yeah, so the fences behind this particular property would have to be changed over to a wall.
Okay.
Yeah, as a requirement, the zoning ordinance says whenever you have residential adjacent to non-residential, in this case, OS adjacent to non-residential, a wall is required.
Well, just for safety, you know, for the children, that, you know, the fence that's back there now is quite rickety. So that was my concern back there, especially with children, small children.
Yeah. Now, it's possible from the standpoint of a fence that we do have the ability to, instead of doing a masonry wall that maybe is, is not as conducive to a residential-type location, that we can use like a fence instead of a wall. It's a little bit softer. It's not as harsh as a brick or masonry wall would be in that residential kind of scenario.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Martin.
I believe at the meeting, I had mentioned the ricketyness of the back fence, and they mentioned that a new fence would be installed that would be up to six feet tall. So they are talking about, they did not mention the fencing during the study session.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for postponing?
Yes.
Commissioner Mia?
I would like to make a motion that we postpone P, let's see, which one is it? PSLU one nine dash triple zero one, special use request, postponed to date certain, which is May twenty-second, 2019.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Denson. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that will be postponed to a date certain. Next on agenda, we have a site plan for the same project, PSP nineteen dash zero 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 one.
It just might be appropriate... To postpone that right at this time until we can get the petitioner here to ask specific questions.
Yes.
Commissioner Mia?
Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone PSP one nine dash triple zero one, site plan review request, postponed to a date certain, which is May twenty-second, 2019.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mia, seconded by Commissioner Culpepper, that the site plan would be moved, postponed to a date certain. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, moves forward to a date certain. Next on agenda, we have approval of the minutes. Commissioner Martin?
Motion to approve the minutes of March sixth study meeting and the March twentieth study meeting, long-range study meeting, and to accept the minutes for those two meetings as written, to make minor update corrections to the minutes of the November twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, the March twenty-seventh, 2019 meeting, as I previously communicated to the planning department.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair?
Okay, Commissioner Culpepper?
I second that motion along with the changes that need to be made to the March twenty-seventh, 2019 regular meeting.
Okay, approval of the minutes have been moved by Commissioner Martin and supported by Commissioner Culpepper. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved as stated. Is there any miscellaneous on the...
I just want to make a couple of brief comments. I just returned from the National Planning Conference. And I'd just like to read a few notes of certain themes that were, were consistent throughout many of the sessions that I went to that are pertinent, I think, to the first case. But one of the health issues that they talked about that we are now facing is called a nature deficit disorder. So people who have lack of access to nature or green space have higher stress levels, have higher mental disabilities, and have slower and longer recovery from other health issues. So they talked about, you know, the speed of things in urban environments, chronic stress. They talked about the importance of connection to nature. They are now measuring walk shed and walkability more than they have ever before. Japanese have this concept of nature bathing. So just like you bathe to clean yourself, it's important to go into nature to clean your stress levels and your souls. They talked about the importance of eco-cities. They are now tracking visits by millenniums through cellphone pings. I mentioned the nature deficit disorder. The old adage used to be grow old in place, now it's grow up in place. So from, from birth to aging, having a community that can accommodate all, all people of all ages. ages. Uh, let's see, living shoreline, they talked about naturalizing importance with climate change and sea change. They talked about how golf courses and golf usage is down by a third since two thousand seven. I went to an interesting session regarding redapt, adaptive reuse of golf courses for passive parks, equestrian trails, biking, hiking, playgrounds, and just connection to They also talked about, you know, engaging youth. Today's youth are tomorrow's leaders, and they showed many examples. Examples near Los Angeles where some underprivileged children took the initiative to take back an alley that was taken over by drug dealers and others that connected their school to their home, and cleaned it up, and created a bike, bike hike trail, and planted native plants and so forth. But, and I've, I've seen a lot of sessions dealing with social equity, and so there's been a big shift from just the physical development to more of a holistic sense of place. They did talk about, you know, standards of why art is important and placemaking and pedestrian, but this is the first time I've seen overlapping themes about the importance to connect to nature. And even patients in hospitals who can even see a tree or green space recover quicker than those who can't. So, I think all the things that we talked about in the first item, and the things that we've been working on, on a site-by-site basis, the things we've been doing in the city center, the trail development, all were reinforced by what I saw at the national level. So, I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. It's good information. Like you said, that does fall hand-in-hand with the nursing facility we discussed earlier today, so, thank you.
If, if I may, through the chair, also miscellaneous item. So, you do have a reg, a study meeting next week, next Wednesday. Obviously, we have these postponed items. I would think that those would just go right to your May twenty-second meeting. But we do have a, a new plan in for an alley vacation, which those rarely, we rarely have those, but we do have a petitioner who's looking to close a portion of an alley for his own use, and we'll be bringing that to the planning commission next week.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right, media's adjourned. Thank you.